Good morning, Leader.
Thank you, Nigel. My name is councillor Martin Hill, leader of Lincolnshire County Council. Welcome to this morning's executive meeting of the county council. And I hope those listening and participating will find it a useful and informative experience. So if we start then with apologies for absence, please. Shall we do the roll call first then, please, Cheryl?
Yes, of course. Thank you, Leader. Could members of the executive and other councils please confirm they are present when their name is called? Councillor Mrs Bradwell.
Present.
Councillor Davy.
Present.
Councillor Davis.
Present.
Councillor Paul.
Present.
Councillor Mrs Woolley.
Present.
Councillor Worth.
Present.
Councillor Young.
Present.
Councillor Parker.
Present.
The following officers are also in attendance. Debbie Barnes, Chief Executive. Les Brittsman, Chief Fire Officer. Andrew Crookham, Executive Director for Resources. James Drury, Executive Director for Commercial. Glenn Garrett, Executive Director for Adult Care and Community Wellbeing. Michelle Grady, Assistant Director for Strategic Finance. Andy Guterson, Executive Director of the Place. Heather Sandy, Executive Director of Children's Services. And Nigel West, Head of Democratic Services. Thank you, Leader.
Thank you very much, Cheryl. So any apologies for absence at anybody's reporting?
No, everybody is in attendance, Leader.
That's very good, thank you. Move on to item two then. Are there any declarations of interest which any councillor would like to make? In the absence of anybody intervening, I will take that there are none at this time. So then I move on to item three, which is the announcements by either myself, executive directors or executive members. From my perspective, just to report that obviously we are still in the coronavirus situation. But I'm pleased to report that the incidence is still very low in Lincolnshire compared to many other parts of the country. We have now set up the local outbreak engagement board, which I chair. And on that board are various partners from various organisations across the county. So we are now set up, if there is a localised outbreak, we'll be in a position to actually hopefully intervene and deal with that. We are getting better and more timely information now from Public Health England about when there is an outbreak. Because obviously, as we know, the testing and tracking is done, sent by central government, on behalf of central government. So the information is improving. I wouldn't go as far as to say it is as good as we would like it to be, but it's certainly a lot better than it was. And we are able then, our public health director, Derek Ward, is able then to be able to monitor what's going on. Better, but not quite as we would like it at the moment. Obviously, throughout the county, it does vary. There is not a uniform incidence of numbers or indeed percentage of outbreaks which are positive tests. But the overall figure is currently very low and reassuringly is still heading in the right direction. But obviously, in the nature of these things, we will also need to make sure that we are armed and ready to intervene as necessary. Apart from that, it's still good news on services, that they are still continuing to run very well. And obviously, as you will hear from some of the exec directors as well, we are slowly beginning to open up some more services, the more traditional services which were suspended during the outbreak. And we're also working with government as they divest themselves of some of the responsibilities and then hand them over to local government to continue or come to a situation where the status is very similar to where we were before. So that's my announcements. Are there any announcements from the executive, please? Anybody wishing to say anything else from the executive, please?
Leader, councillor David.
Thank you. Fire away. Thank you, Colin.
Thank you very much, Martin. I think it's just worth me reporting formally to the executive the announcement by government last week of a £25.8 million award to the Greater Lincolnshire Lep area for building growth projects for the future. Due diligence is currently underway with civil servants to make sure that the projects that we have submitted for the Lep area meet the criteria. There should be an announcement shortly about which projects are to receive funding. I think also it's worth noting that in advance of the Chancellor's statement on Wednesday, we were expecting further announcements. Government is clearly indicating to us that for the October statement, they are looking for transformational projects around digital infrastructure and environment, particularly sustainable transport. So as an authority, our team will work across the council to make sure we're able to submit projects that are really going to help the Lincolnshire landscape in the years ahead. Thank you, Leader.
Thank you very much. Councillor Worth, I think you want to come in?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, the few things that have been going on in my area just recently, the Usher Gallery concentrate continues. The consultants are currently working out three options. We're expecting that report back on the 21st of July. In the registration service, death registrations are still going ahead by telephone. We're now doing some birth registrations as well, so we've got a fair backlog of those to catch up on. And notice of marriages are also now going ahead, along with some weddings we hope fairly shortly. In the fire and rescue service, continuing to roll out, I'm pleased to say, some new fire engines across the county. So we've got three more now ready to go out. I think that's probably most of my announcements, Chairman.
Thank you, Nick. Councillor Woolley?
Thank you, Leader. Just wanted to update colleagues on the councillors' Covid fund. We've had 240 successful applications and that's amounted to about just over £130,000 worth of funding that's gone out to small volunteer and community groups that have sprung up to help in their communities throughout this pandemic.
Thank you. Any further exec members want to say anything? If not, I will then move forward on to agenda item four then, which is the minutes of the executive held on the 2nd of June. If it's your wish, we'll go to a vote now. Just to remind members, everybody who is a voting member, that's the eight members of the executive, their screens need to be on and we'll do a show of hands vote on the screen. Anybody who is not on the executive, please remove themselves from the screen so we are aware of who's actually voting. So I propose that these minutes are taken as true and accurate record of the meeting we had on the 2nd of June. All those in favour, please show. Thank you, that is carried, thank you very much. And we can go on then to item five. So obviously revert back to where we were before in terms of screens, please. So that is the annual report we have every year, which is the review of the financial performance of the previous financial year. So obviously, that is 2019-20. Overall, a reassuring picture, but obviously we are still facing highly uncertain times. So I'll now ask first of all Andrew Crookham to introduce that and then I presume Michelle Grady will then talk us through the detail. Andrew.
Thank you, Leader. Yes, sir, as you said, the paper reports the overall financial performance, both on the general fund and for schools for 2019-20. Again, as you referred to, a positive picture in terms of managing our financial performance. I think it's important to note the year-end figures in the context of the budget process that we've just been through for 2020-21, where we took out £15 million of savings. Michelle may refer to those too. I'm happy to come back later as well, Chairman, to provide an update on the Covid financial position, if that's something that you and fellow executive members would wish to hear. But I'll hand over to Michelle.
I think that'd be good and just an overall, because obviously there's been bits of grant money coming in and all that stuff. So an overall picture would be useful. Thank you, Michelle. So you're going to take us through the paper now. Swift transition forward at this time.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I'll go through the report, which as we've said is the review of the financial performance for 1920. The report sets out the context in which the budget was set for that year and included the planned use of the volatility reserve of just over £3 million. I'll go through some of the key highlights, key points on the performance. As Andrew has just mentioned, the Covid isn't really affecting the 1920 performance, but there is some narrative at the end of each directorate section that just gives a bit of an update on some of the impacts that did fall within the 1920 financial year. And so we'll go straight to the revenue out term, which is in page 19 of your report, at the bottom of page 19. The variance on the council's budgets overall excluding schools was an overall revenue underspend of £15.14 million. In addition, there was an underspend of £11.958 million that relates to schools and that will be carried forward for them to be using that in future financial years. Table B on page 20 includes the variances by commissioning strategy and these variances are explained in page 21 to 32 of your report. Just some key points from the variances there. On the learn and achieve line, we have home-to-school transport overspend of £2.3 million, representing increases in unit costs and growth in entitlement provision, particularly with children with special educational needs needing to attend mainstream schools. On the adult frailty and long-term conditions line, we have an underspend of just over £3 million there, relates in part to accelerated recovery of income, mainly due from direct payment refunds and debtor collection. On sustaining and developing prosperity through infrastructure, a large variance there relates to transport concessionary fares, a £1.8 million underspend due to drop in passenger journeys and increased age of eligibility. On the enablers and support to councils outcomes line, large variance there on IMT, a £1.4 million underspend, predominantly due to staff vacancies and underspends on licensing and the work programme. And in other budgets, we have an underspend on capital financing of £5.1 million, which is proportionate and reflective of the delivery of the capital programme. If we move on to the capital programme, table C on page 33 summarises the variances for the programme with a total net underspend of £17 million, which was 18.8% of the net programme. Details of the variances of individual block programmes and projects are set out in pages 45 to 61 of your report and any capital over and underspends are carried forward automatically to the new financial year. The largest variance on the capital programme is on the highways asset protection block, which is shown on page 54 of your report. This has an overspend of £11.8 million, which is a rolling programme of work, was budgeted to overspend and to over-deliver. It's matched against the DFT grant and any overspends on that will be carried forward into the future years. If we move on to prudential indicators, appendix B of your report sets out all of our prudential indicators and it shows that these have not been exceeded during the year and there have been no breach in limits set by the authority. We have a flexible use of capital receipts policy and the report sets out our use of flexible capital receipts. Our budget in 1920 included £8 million use of capital receipts for revenue transformation purposes. We actually generated £9.1 million of receipts and during the year we utilised £3.2 million of those for transformation projects, with the remaining £5.9 being used to fund the capital programme. If we move on to the carry forward of under and overspends and transfers to reserves, page 38 of your report sets out the proposed carry forward of underspends. Schools underspend are set out before, get carried forward automatically. So that leaves the remaining £15.14 million of council's revenue underspend. There are a number of business as usual transfers to reserve that are for noting. For example, transfer to the civil parking reserve and there is a proposed transfer to the insurance fund of £1.038 million. We're proposing the creation of a new reserve for capital financing. We set this out as part of our budget papers and the idea of this reserve is to help smooth the revenue impact of a capital programme that hasn't got an equal spend throughout its 10-year programme. This leaves the service 1% underspend of £3.235 million and the overall balance of revenue underspends of £4.159 million. And the transfers proposed in the paper is to transfer this £7.394 million to the development fund earmarked reserve for the purpose of supporting the council's transformation and recovery plans. And that leaves the financial volatility reserve a balance of £52.6 million and all transfers to and from reserves are shown on page 40 of the report. That's the end of my presentation and I'll hand over for any questions.
Thank you. Councillor Parker, would you like to just review the one October script you had to say about the report?
Sure. There are a number of points that have been circulated in the paper that I think that you've already got. I think the starting point in terms of adult social care was the welcome noting that there was a general underspend of £2.24 million. There was a discussion about some smaller issues about contracts in relation to care as commissioning strategy. And Hugo, as Chair of the Adults and Community Wellbeing, said that the matter had been discussed at the earlier meeting on the 1st of July. So in a sense, there was ups and downs in the budget for adult care and community wellbeing. But the general position again was an underspend of £2.24 million. So that was considered to be good. The old issue of the 1073 doesn't seem to go away in a sense. And that was the point was made, I think that this goes back a good number of years. The road was completed a long time ago, but there's still some minor anxiety about whether or not there will continue to be claims for compensation arising from the impact of the road scheme. And it was debated briefly and we thought we'd just bring it to the attention of the executive. More concern was the overspend on the home school transport budget for a number of reasons. Increased demand for special education needs for children, legislative changes. And unfortunately, with coronavirus with us, it doesn't seem as though the home-to-school transport budget is going to be anything other than under pressure. However, the return to school in September works because there's a whole range of issues, including the availability of transport, social distancing, which will be a challenge. We can't help but think, although this is a review of the last year, it is worth, of course, reminding everybody. Although I'm sure that the portfolio holder will be very acutely aware of the issue. The contingency budget was debated in the sense that it seemed to be almost, in a sense, sterile. It'd been £3 million for a number of years, there'd been no demand on it, very little call. And the question was, what was it really there for? Now, I know everybody says we need a contingency budget, but it seemed as though it was fulfilling a purpose that was more theoretical than practical. The thing that was used as an explanation for the lack of use of the contingency budget was it's until recently and unbeknown, I suppose to some of us on OSMB, each of a number of the individual directorates had their own contingency budget, which was clawed in, should we say, or alternatively offered up for savings, depending on which way you look at it, for the 2021 financial year. So maybe it's a stroke that that sort of hidden pots of money had been identified and brought into the centre. But the question of a contingency, when we've got the variety of balances that we've got, does make us think that maybe in future, we ought to look at whether or not that's got a real meaning. The argument was put forward that potentially, if we have a big pay rise this year beyond the 2%, then it could be used for that. But in a sense, we have reserves earmarked everywhere, so to have a further contingency budget is questionable. I think the point about the underspend on capital financing charges did stimulate me because it was on the same meeting that we were discussing the Treasury Management paper. And what we have is a slippage in the capital financing programme, which we know happens every year. There is always slippage and that's not a bad thing. It's a recognition of the real world, that things don't go according to plan. But we have capital financing slippage, which in turn leads to lower financing requirement, which in turn produces an underspend on the revenue capital finance budget. Now, you know, it's a question of, do we want to recognise early on that although we have a notional programme at that level, that we could expect that notional capital programme to be underspent? Or alternatively, do we have ready-to-hand programmes that can be substituted in order to maintain the capital programme at that level from those schemes that would have made it if there'd been enough money available? We recognise that more internal borrowing is being considered as a strategy and those, should we say, individual items that lead from one to another, capital programme slippage, lower financing requirement, underspend on the revenue capital budget, the notion of more internal borrowing, needs to be looked at in the whole. I think they're the points that we wanted to bring to the attention of the executive.
Thank you very much for that. And I think that all of those, I think were very valid points to bring forward and something we do need to consider. I think you're right to, on the major issue, shall we say, in terms of home-to-school transport, there will be, we're sure, increased pressure. But I think across the piece, and it's not just for councils, there does seem to be a general raising of charges everywhere you go, whether it's you're going to get your hair cut or go to the shops, prices seem to have gone up. And I think there is a lot of inflation in terms of businesses when they're tendering for work. So I think that will be an issue for the council, for all the services we procure, that there will probably be some pressure in the future in terms of contracts reviewed forward. And as you said, the home-to-school transport is one where, with the issues of coronavirus as well, there will be extreme pressure. Of course, the other issue is in the market in terms of businesses under some severe financial pressure due to the disruption in their market model, shall we say. So I think there are some really big issues for us as we move out of coronavirus in the future. I'll tell you the point about the contingency budget. You're correct to identify that there were some, you did phrase it very diplomatically actually, Councillor Parker, but there were some directorate contingencies which they have now agreed to give up to the centre. So I think for this year anyway, we'll see what happens this year, whether that is needed. And of course, when we come to setting the budget next year, one of the things we will review is that indeed. And capital financing is always a difficult one, but one always hopes that people actually deliver the schemes that as we hoped at a timescale we had wanted to do so. But as you said, it never quite happens. But I wouldn't want to be in the position where we have problems delivering schemes because of the lack of finance or indeed, shall I say, the lack of ability to provide the finance because of bureaucratic issues. Okay, questions and comments then from the executive, please. One moment, we're going to go off and chat. So I have councillor Bradwell.
Yeah, just to carry on from yourself about home-to-school transport. Obviously, this is a real issue for children's services and obviously it hasn't helped with Covid-19 and transporting children to school, as councillor Parker said, with social distancing. We understand though from September that children won't have to social distance on a bus. Government is saying they've got to travel within their bubble, which they'll be in their class with. But to be honest, that's going to be very difficult because as we know, we're transporting, you know, whole groups, busfuls of children and they don't all sit in the same class. So I think we have some challenges with school transport and that runs across transport for special educational needs and mainstream schools as well. And as the Leader said, you know, some of our bus companies and that, they're not doing all the business that they normally would during the Covid-19. So, you know, they are under immense financial pressure. So I just want to say to colleagues that, you know, we are treating this very seriously. We're doing a lot of work with transport services about, you know, looking at these contracts and how we try to sustain that increase that we have seen this last year. So obviously, we'll be talking, I presume we'll be bringing more reports as the year goes on, looking at how the budget moves forward, has moved forward over the last few months. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments, please? Anybody else? Martin? Yes, councillor Richard, councillor Davis.
Thank you. On the broader issue of the transformation fund, I just wonder whether or not we could get some outlines on what areas specifically this reserve is going to be addressed towards and potentially a timeline in place with regards to when we could see proposals being brought forward.
Thank you. I mean, obviously, just for whoever's watching this understands that normal procedure is we, certainly for departmental budgets, we normally allow them to carry forward 1% on the basis that it's probably good practice that you don't get a situation where people are just spending money at the end of the year to keep hold of it, so to speak. So this year has been a change and I think it is as part of the change of the culture of the county council to be more corporate. And as part of that, I think the proposal is to have this corporate fund, if you like. I think councillor Davis is correct to raise the issue of what progress we're making in terms of how that fund will, that £7 million fund will be used. So whether Andrew or Debbie wants to respond to that?
Great, thank you very much, Leader. I think that's absolutely right and proper that councillor Davis is asking for a full resource plan around how the transformation programme will be delivered. I'm actually going to ask James to come in so that James can outline the various different elements in the programme and also when he hopes to be able to put a resource plan together that he can share with the executive.
Thank you, Debbie. Thank you, Leader. And yes, so the transformation programme is, we will be working up plans and completely understand and support councillor Davis's question. And we will be coming back to informal exec, I would suggest, probably in September, as there's not a month, a meeting in August, to present an outline plan of the priority areas that we're covering and also the resources that we'll need. And those resources may be staffing, but they also may be investments as well in technology as an example to help support smarter working and a more mobile and flexible working. So that work will be developing and well, is being developed now, will continue to develop. And as I say, we can bring that back to informal exec in September, but have other meetings building up to that with yourselves to make sure that we're on the right track and you're comfortable with the approach that we are proposing.
Thank you for that. I mean, that's fair enough. I mean, I think in terms of coronavirus and changing our ways of working, obviously, I think there are lots of lessons that everybody can learn, every organisation in the country can learn about how it can do things differently. So that would be good. But obviously, we do need to move on and have some suggestions, shall we say. Because September, we're already a good way apart through the year. So I do think we want to make sure that we are starting to spend this money and spend it wisely and well. And just to reassure the organisation, this is not, this is a one-off situation as far as we're concerned, unless something really desperate happens next financial year, which I suppose isn't beyond the bounds of credibility. But the full intention of the executive is that we're, business as usual will be, normally if you have an underspend or an overspend for that matter, you will deal with it within your particular directorate or however directors want to deal with it within their own organisational structures. Apart from that, I mean, I'd just like Andrew or Michelle just to summarise, because there's been lots of... there's been lots of government grants being announced, obviously for this year's budget, but obviously it will impact on some of the conversations we've had. So just summarise where what's been going on in terms of grant money to local government. Thank you.
Thank you, Leader. Yeah, so as it stands today, we're currently forecasting to have spent around £47 million on Covid-related activities and/or lost income and that's against £35 million of confirmed grants. And the most notable areas of that spend are particularly in the adult care market. But as councillor Bradwell just referred to, their issues like home to school transport have been very, very difficult to forecast and have been changing on a very regular basis. And that forecast also doesn't include at this moment in time any potential future losses related to council tax or business rates income, as they're currently being reported at district level only. However, we are working very closely with them to understand any implications on our future budgets. I guess it's important to give a bit of national context on our figures as well. We're at the low end of the counties in terms of what they're reporting and that's predominantly because of our, the solid savings plan that we put in this year in terms of taking money out. We haven't, we haven't been behind the curve in terms of delivering any savings. And also as well, we aren't reliant in our budget on any speculative commercial income, which is what a lot of other councils, the pressures are driving for them. Now, there were a number of announcements made last Thursday. A third tranche of grant funding, £500 million nationally was announced for costs. Now typically we'd receive about 1% of any national funding announcement, though the government have changed the distribution methodologies as we've gone through the crisis. Firstly, the first tranche was divided up via the adult needs formula. The second tranche was by population. There is talk, the third, this third tranche may be divided up via deprivation measures and area cost adjustments. So we're just keeping an eye on that and we're expecting an announcement, an announcement on that later in the week, though there will be some more money to add on to that £35 million that we've received so far. The government also announced that they are, will be willing to cover losses in sales, fees and charges. So they're willing to cover 75% of income losses above a 5% baseline. And again, we're waiting to see which income will be covered by that, though we would expect things like the heritage service losses that we've reported already would be covered by that. And lastly, I talked about council tax and business rates losses and typically they would feed into future years' budget settings as a collection from deficits. And the government have signalled that they'd be willing to allow councils to split those over three years to cushion the impact of any impacts in one year's work of budgeting. So again, we'll be working through the implications of that, working closely with the districts to understand how that will impact on our medium cent position, which we'll seek to report back to members at the back end of the year. Thank you, Leader.
Thank you, Andrew. Right, any further questions or comments, please, on any of what you've heard so far? I'll just pause in case there are any more. Okay, so then we will go to the recommendations, which are on page 11, which as we agreed are that we know the carry forwards which have been set out and then the treatment of underspends, which we've just discussed just now, and then the financial performance as well. So there are those, and then the fourth, and then I guess there are four recommendations there. So if we go back to the voting procedure then, so anybody who's not a member of the executive, please remove and tell some of the screen. And I hope you just see eight screens in front of me so we can vote. So the recommendations are there, which I would propose. Could I have a second, please?
Second, Leader.
Thank you, councillor Poll, second. So all those in favour of those recommendations, please show their hands. Thank you. Everybody's voted there, so that has been carried. Thank you very much. So that is the sole item on the agenda today. So all that needs me to do now is thank you very much for your attendance and have a good day and we'll see you again next, no, we won't see you again next month. I don't think there is an executive next month, is there, Cheryl?
No, that's correctly.
See you in September, but we're all very busy. I promise that we're all very busy making sure the council runs smoothly. So thank you very much for your attendance.
Yeah, thanks, Leader.